Okay, so today on the John Riley Project, I'm pleased to welcome Kim Garnier. Kim is a candidate for Poway Unified School Board, Area B, representing much of Poway. Kim, welcome to the John Riley Project.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Okay, so we saw each other at the Green Valley Civic Association Poway Chamber event a few nights ago, and you were up on stage there with your two competitors. And that was a big moment, I'm sure, in your campaign, right?
It was, yes.
So just tell us sort of overall, like, how are things going?
Really well. I had no idea how exciting a campaign could be. I've never been in this position for a campaign before. I've been behind the scenes. And it's been an emotional journey, though.
Oh, no doubt.
You know, there's a lot of paperwork and dry aspects to this, but I love talking to the people throughout the community and hearing a variety of concerns and reconnecting with the community in a different capacity than the work I was doing before.
Good. Yeah, it is fun to get out there and meet new people and kind of listen to some of the challenges people have and ways you can solve problems.
Yes.
Like, what are some of the things voters are telling you when you're talking to folks out there?
The number one concern has been the budget. But there's also some really underlying issues with the way the district is approaching special education and special needs families. And that has probably tugged at my heartstrings more than anything. I'm working with this woman right now, and she is in a military family. Her husband deploys frequently, and her son came in from a different school district. And the IEP was not appropriate for her son. They wouldn't sign it. And she is now being sued by the school district. And they're currently trying to work through things with costly litigation. So that's something that's really bothered me. And it's not the first case I've heard about it. And that's something that really stands out to me that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, the special needs community at Poway Unified is interesting because in most cases, the school district does a really, really good job with special needs families. And in fact, they do such a good job that they often will attract families. They'll come here to take their kids to school here, almost like how Poway High attracts wrestlers, you know?
Yes.
So, but you know, obviously, they don't have a perfect record. I mean, there's definitely been some challenges, some issues. But you know, it's interesting, you talk about the budget and you talk about special needs. And the special needs is an increasing portion of the budget. So there's a lot of demand for those services. So what are some of the solutions you think that are available? Maybe things that you can do to help those families?
Well, we have to empower parents because a lot of times, they don't know their rights. My husband and I get called in to help with IEPs and families struggling frequently. And oftentimes, it's made so much more complicated than it needs to be. And parents don't know their rights, so they don't know how to advocate for their child appropriately. And the parents come in for these IEPs, and there's an intimidation factor. And I think we lose sight of actually how to help the child. And so when my husband steps in, he's familiar with educational policy and that sort of thing. I do a lot of the background work. He steps into the IEP. And attorneys get involved, and once the attorneys get involved, they're there to make money. There's no interest in settling these cases. So I think we need to educate parents and empower these parents so they can make the best choices for their students and then not take it to this point of litigation. So it's a bigger problem than I realized, and how much time and money is wasted? There was a case where there was a young boy, and the principal approached the mother for the first time, lovely family, and said, "Your son is the most violent child I've ever known." That was their first interaction.
Whoa.
And this little boy's in kindergarten. He had an aide with him all the time. The district was trying to, the principal, excuse me, was trying to send this young man, this little boy, to a school outside of Poway Unified for $35,000 a year. The parents had hired an attorney. There was so much going on. We step in, and they had denied the family to allow certain people into the IEP. So the pediatrician, things like that. That's not okay. That's not right. The family said, "Can we just change schools? Can we try that?" They denied that. They wanted to spend the $35,000 to send this child to an outside school. My husband stepped in and said, "I'd like to see the documentation of violence, since this is the most violent child you've ever met."
Yeah.
Not one incident of violence was documented. We saw the videotape of this child from the father, and I said, "Don't tell me who your son is yet. Let me watch the video." I pinpointed this other little boy, who was a little bit more active than the rest, couldn't really sit still. I thought, "Okay, maybe that's him." It wasn't him. It was a kid I didn't even notice. This little boy just sitting there. This child speaks three different languages, plays piano, plays soccer. Because we got involved and with the help of the superintendent, he is now at another school in Poway Unified with no additional cost to our district. He has no aide. He's thriving. He's doing very, very well. So those are the instances where you scratch your head and you think, "That was the solution." And no one was there to check that principal's decision-making. And if this child is violent, why isn't the principal documenting it? Is that a systemic failure of policy and procedure in the district? Or is that just a principal making bad choices on her own? As far as the budget goes in other capacities, again, it goes back to the waste. Why are we spending so much money on things that we don't need to spend money on? We're top-heavy at the district level. That doesn't need to be that way. We have paid for reports, $40,000 for a technical report. Gabby Dow mentioned that. The Moore Report, it got thrown in the trash for the most part. That was where they said, "This is a toxic environment, and we can't fix technology until that's addressed." So, and again, time and again, I just see money thrown at attorneys or a big issue, and it's an uncomfortable topic, but the raises that we're giving now. I support unions. All my campaign literature is on union-made material. But the union is there to protect and keep a balance of power. And right now, I feel that the teachers' union has overstepped that line in the sand of power. And it's become almost a bully. And a teacher at Rancho Bernardo the other day said, "Stop giving me raises. I can't get aides in here."
Stop giving me raises? Really?
And I said, "Wow, that's not what I hear from every teacher."
Right.
And she said, "My aide makes no money, and she works very hard. Stop giving me raises." And I said, "Wow, that's pretty impressive." And we have a line of people who want to work at Poway Unified. We have a great school district overall. So we need to take a look at how we're handing out raises. And you know, that money can go maybe towards more counselors or things like that. So allocation of funds is huge to get the most bang for our buck.
You just touched on a whole bunch of issues. I mean, what's interesting, let me try to backtrack. So first, you talk about student rights.
Yes.
And that's interesting because like in the state of California, every child is guaranteed an education. And I know that for special needs students, they're guaranteed transportation to school. And I'm sure there's a whole bunch of other items in that list that they're guaranteed to receive. And who's standing up to defend those rights? Because a parent might be naively just going in to speak with a principal, and the principal not only knows the rules, but has an attorney at their beck and call. That's interesting. It's good that there is some support, you know, for parents so they know their rights. So bravo. I mean, after all, the parents are the ones paying the taxes.
Yes.
You know, so they want to make sure that they're getting the value for what they're paying for. So, good. You know, it's interesting, you also talk about the teachers' union. And I think this is something, in the podcast we did with Gabby Dow, we talked about this, how, you know, the teachers, they deserve to be paid well.
Yes.
And they do an incredibly important job.
Yes.
But they're not the only person. And we got to a point now, because of the raises, that the school district is spending more than it brings in.
Yes.
And it's just not a balanced budget, not a balanced process. The teachers' union does have a great deal of power. And I don't think that's unique in our school district. It's everywhere, right? But it does provide a juxtaposition when voters are looking at this race, and they see you, and then they see the candidate that's supported by the teachers. And it's interesting.
Again, I'm the only candidate in Area B that did not seek the teachers' union endorsement. I want to make that clear that I'm here, you know, great if I win, I can make some changes. But I'm here to change the conversation more than anything. And instead of the formula of praise teachers up one end and down the other, and get elected, and in return, then give the teachers a raise, I want to say, "Let's put the brakes on." There's a step and column raise system. Most teachers in the district get a raise every year. They have the opportunity for money through more education, time, that sort of thing. And listen, I have friends in the district who are teachers. I had teachers in the district growing up K through 12 here, who I thought were phenomenal. And I have a girlfriend out in Oklahoma who's a teacher who can't make ends meet. So this is not, I just refuse to be manipulated by me saying, "We do not need to give teachers raises every year on top of the step and column raise and make that about me being against teachers." That's not what this is about. And you have to pay teachers well to bring the best in. But at some point, we have to balance it. And when teachers are continually getting a raise at the expense of other resources that the school district needs, that's not okay. And I said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm the union for the students, and I'm a union for the taxpayers. Taxpayers are willing to invest in things if they get a good return. And if they're investing in a school district, yet that school district cannot provide basic things for their students or counselors or safety measures, they're not going to be happy. So you have to take a step back and not play the game and do what's right for the totality of the community. And if that means raise for the teachers, great. If it means no extra raise on top of their step and column raise that year, let's make that tough choice.
Yeah, I mean, that's what the trustees are elected to do, right?
That's right.
To make the tough choices.
Yes.
Right? That's their whole function, right?
Yes.
Right? So let's talk about kind of your vision, like, looking forward. You know, what are some of the bigger ideas that you want to bring forward to benefit the district and the students, some innovative ideas that you have?
Well, I think that Poway Unified, in some ways, has rested on our laurels for too long. And we boast this stellar reputation. But when you look behind the curtain, if you will, there's some really scary things we're looking at. Safety is a concern, and these are talking points that I hear a lot of people say, and they don't actually do what it takes with the budget to make these things happen. So let me be clear, this is not a talking point for me. Let's implement a very cost-effective way to secure schools. And one of that is, I went around to the schools, and they do not have panic buttons, if you will. I was sitting with one principal, and he said, "I always wonder what I would do." The room we were sitting in had a view of the front of the school. And he said, "What if I saw somebody coming in who clearly wanted to harm the school? What would I do first? Would I call the police? Would I tell my secretary?" And I thought, "So you don't have a panic button, like a fire alarm, if you will, with a different sound to alert everyone, to cause the school to go on lockdown immediately?" And he said, "No. Every school I've been to so far has said they do not have that in place." That's a pretty easy fix. There's already an alarm system at the school. Insert a different sound, and we at least have one more way to protect our schools. There's so much that I want to do, but it always goes back to the budget. And if there's not the money there, then we can't do it. And we won't have the money unless we balance our budget. So first and foremost, above all, I want to get that budget in check. And then we can reexamine our priorities. And whatever our priorities are, we can go from there. But I think for too long, the students have not been the top priority.
Yeah, you know, when we did the podcast with Charles Sellers, he talked about that, you know? And he said that, you know, the students were his first priority. And he was commenting about the resources in the classroom and how there weren't enough. And he said, "You know, giving a raise to teachers is great for the teacher, but it really doesn't help the kid."
Yeah.
And it's an interesting way to think of it. But yeah, the budget is interesting because the budget is largely a reflection of an agenda, right?
Yes.
It is kind of how you prioritize the initiatives you want to pursue because that's what you choose to fund, right? But yeah, let's talk about school safety, you know, in light of, you know, the terrible school shootings that have occurred. I mean, I know Poway Unified has taken some precautions, some measures. I mean, what are your thoughts on what the school district has done to handle those situations?
Well, I think the lack of transparency surrounding school safety is disconcerting. So Dr. Tony Apostel, who was an interim superintendent, he called attention to this issue. And the school board was well aware of it, and they chose not to act. And then all of a sudden, they come out, and there's this big meeting, and everyone cares about school safety. Well, until it was brought out into the open, how much were they caring about the safety of the students? And again, I mentioned this at the forum as well. When the school district was having some work done, the money went first and foremost into the district office. And if you go there, it is beautiful, and the security there was insane. That had to trickle down to the other, the schools. And the schools with the lowest socioeconomic status got the safety features in later than the other schools. Channel 10 did a story about that, and they walked around, oh, what is it? New Directions, excuse me.
Oh, yeah.
And they found that there is no safety measures in place for those students. And again, is it the students first? If the district office is the most secure? And how often do you hear about tragedies happening at a district office? It's usually not a superintendent people want to go after. It's children because it creates the most horror.
Yeah.
So again, it comes down to priorities, and we can do better. And we're never going to be completely safe. That's a false sense of security. But when we have great minds come in like Dr. Tony Apostel, and he points these things out, act immediately. Start somewhere. Don't put it on the back burner. This is a major concern. And now that it's election time, it's a great buzz thing. But, you know, we can do better.
Right, of course. I think you have to do better in light of what, you know, has been happening around the country. You know, it's interesting, when you think about school safety, and at the, you know, the Green Valley Civic Association event, a lot of the city council people spoke about, you know, public safety, you know, police and fire being the most important thing that a city does. So to a large degree, I mean, you think a school district is about teaching, but you can't teach in an unsafe environment.
No. And there's physical safety and psychological safety.
Yeah.
And that can be addressed in a variety of ways as well. My parents were at a Friends of the Library event at Rancho Bernardo High School, and they were texting me, "We have to be quiet. We're on lockdown." This is the new world we live in right now, and we don't know what's a prank and what is the real deal. And we have to take this seriously so after the fact, we don't say, "Man, coulda, woulda, shoulda."
Right.
We have enough warnings in place. And what's going to happen after the election? How much is going to change?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to take a look at the budget, you know? Like, we talk about it as a reflection of the agenda and the priorities. I wonder how much money is allocated to school safety. I have no idea.
I don't either, no.
Yeah, that would be a good thing to take a look at because maybe those priorities need to be adjusted.
Yeah.
Wow. So what else are you hearing? You see, from voters, you're hearing about the budget, you're hearing about special needs, talking a little bit about school safety. What are some of the other hot-button issues that you're uncovering?
Well, you talked to me about my vision, and I touched on it to an extent. And I said, "We're resting on our laurels." I think we've lost setting the bar high and setting expectations high for our direction, our trajectory. And when I talk to people who come in from other school districts and they say, "Wow, I was surprised at how behind Poway Unified is in technology," or things of that nature, I actually get embarrassed. I'm a K through 12 Poway Unified graduate, and I grew up thinking, "This is the best school district in the entire nation."
Yeah.
"Good luck beating us." And when I hear San Diego Unified people coming up and saying, "You do better." I read a report about Chula Vista Unified surpassing Poway Unified in some areas. And I thought, "Okay, so, you know, Chula Vista, Poway, it shouldn't be quite so, even when people are paying in taxes what they are paying here."
Yeah, yeah.
So my vision is really to take us out of the hamster wheel, if you will, and start looking at innovative ideas. There's so much opportunity out there. There was a gentleman that I just heard speak the other day. He wrote a book from high school dropout to Harvard, and he has dyslexia and ADHD. And when he was speaking, he was addressing what it's like in Silicon Valley and how they encourage creativity, and people write on the walls, and they don't really sit down. And I'm a little bit old-school, and that sounds like chaos to me. But at the same time, if we're doing our research and we're looking at evidence-based research, we can see how beneficial that is. And our classrooms have not kept up with the global demand for innovation and change in technology. And my son, last year, when he was in sixth grade, he was coloring all the time. And we asked the teacher, "Can we maybe do the same project, but utilize computer technology a little bit more?" And she actually wouldn't allow that. My daughter, this year, in sixth grade, her teacher's all about it. And I feel like she's getting more opportunity for growth with that different curriculum. So I think we need to find the most future-focused minds and have them influence our school district. One of the pros of being around here is that people love it so much that their grandparents are here, their parents are here, their kids are here.
Yeah, it's true.
People graduate, they go to college, they come right back into the classroom and teach. And while that's a great sense of community and family, some of the ideas are a little bit stale, and some of the energy is a little bit stale. And change is never comfortable.
No, never is.
I don't like change. In fact, if I had a rotary phone, I would be just fine. But I challenge myself. Yeah, what's wrong with that? So it's uncomfortable for me. So I understand that it's also uncomfortable for other people, and it's uncomfortable when we have outsiders coming in and possibly judging us. But I think we have to embrace change more at Poway Unified, and that's something that I see Dr. Phelps doing to an extent, and I'm excited by that. And some of her cabinet, I was really excited by. But let's turn it up.
Yeah.
Let's go all the way.
Well, I think the Design 39 campus is meant to be that innovative laboratory of experimentation, right? I mean, what are your thoughts on that campus, the Design 39?
Oh, it's exciting. Oh, my goodness, it's exciting. But it's one campus.
Yeah.
And how many kids aren't exposed to that?
So it's like a lottery to get into it, right?
Yeah. And I think that the kids at Valley and Midland and, you know, the schools throughout Poway Unified should have the exact same opportunities. Again, budget, you know?
Right.
How do we get that out there? But again, it comes from new ideas coming in, innovative ideas. We have such a great resource of people here as a whole, and people who know people and people who've heard about these ideas. And I just met today with Jake Schwartz, the student board member, and I asked him about his best educational experience. And he said he had a science teacher who had her doctoral degree, and she worked at UCSD, and she would bring an equipment from UCSD. And he described how that impacted his learning experience, having this amazing equipment in the classroom and having a teacher who was so passionate about her field of study. And although it may be impossible, I don't take no for an answer, and I have high expectations. So let's set the bar of what we're striving for. And every student, every socioeconomic community should have access to the greatest teachers. And, you know, yes, they need to be paid well, but there's other ways to entice the best minds to come here and have children learning with that passion.
Do you ever get a sense, just speaking with teachers, that some teachers try to be innovative, but they're not allowed to be innovative? Does that happen?
I think that, I don't know that I can say they're not allowed, but they're held back by the lack of resources. One teacher at Twin Peaks, she said, "This was the intended lesson plan, but I didn't have access to the technology this day, so we had to make a change. Let's figure out a way to get the devices that the teachers need and the education." I talked to one principal, and she said, "There's a lot of teachers also who are hesitant to learn this new technology." And again, I get it. I understand that. So how do we make it a safe learning environment? That principal also educated me that there's so much thrown at teachers these days. Here's the new textbook. Here's the new way we're teaching. Here's the new technology. But a lot of them just kind of wait until the next thing comes around. They don't have to learn that way. And so I think we need to treat these teachers as professionals and respect how hard they work and create a nurturing environment for them to learn the technology so they can bring it to their students.
Yeah, I think that's important. I mean, I remember I was talking to my wife, and she had seen a segment on, I don't know, it was Dateline or 2020, and they were talking about how the classroom, generally speaking, looks the same today as it did 100 years ago. You know, there's like 30 desks all in rows and chalkboard in the front. And so you always wonder, "What are the things that we can be doing differently?" And, you know, what are the kind of, you know, learning by doing?
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
You can actually be using some of that equipment, whether it's, you know, laboratory equipment, or whether it's, you know, woodshop equipment in vocational trades, you know?
Yes. Well, I saw something, it was like a meme, meme, I don't know, whatever it's called, on Facebook, and it said something about that, how our classrooms have not really changed. And I saw a lot of teachers fighting back against that, saying, "No, they have changed. Look at my classroom." And I thought, "Okay, it's updated, but it's pretty much the same." Now, my husband just got back from studying education in Hong Kong. We were able to go out and join him, and it was lovely. But the classrooms there, they're not even close to our classrooms, and everyone's touching something, and they all have a device in their hand, and walls can move in the classroom.
Really? Wow.
I mean, it's just 180. And we live in a global environment where we have to be able to keep up with people from China. And not just keep up, but we want to lead the way in America. So not only do we have to catch up to the way other educational systems are performing, we have to figure out a way to go past that. And again, Poway is this beautiful little city in the country and everything. But that doesn't mean that we can't be at the forefront of public education and be giving our kids the best and our teachers the best and the taxpayers the best as well.
Yeah, I think that's important. I think that's a good thing for you to have that experience, to see not just how Poway's doing it, not just how, we'll just say, Chula Vista or Sandy Agito's doing it, but how is Hong Kong doing it?
Yes.
You know, and then, you know, you ask, you hear, you know, people bring up, you know, the educational systems in Europe.
Yes.
You know, I'm sure there's really smart people studying, and I'm sure that's probably what your husband's studying, right?
Yes.
So, you know, what are some of the, you know, best practices that are being implemented successfully that we can bring to Poway?
Well, I think my husband could probably give you a much better answer on that than me. But the focus is so much on the success of the child. Now, what America faces that a lot of other countries don't is our diversity. And that is probably our biggest challenge in order to meet the needs of a variety of people.
Yeah.
But when we invest in our kids, and in Poway Unified, we're not truly investing in our kids. When the kids don't have access to bathrooms even at their school or clean drinking water, you cannot tell me for a second that we're investing in our kids. So much of our money goes to the communications department to entice the stakeholders, if you will, into believing that Poway Unified is the best thing since sliced bread. Why is the money going to convincing us of that? Why don't we just put it into actually serving the kids so that the success speaks for itself? I pulled my children out of standardized testing. I don't like it. I think it's a moneymaker, and I don't think it's an accurate view, and so much time and energy goes into that.
Teaching to the test.
Teaching to the test.
Right.
What are we doing? That's not even logical. There is a woman I just spoke with, and she said, "The teacher in her child's classroom, she volunteers frequently, and the teacher handed her a book, she said, 'This big.'" She said, "The teacher said, 'I don't have time to learn this new text. Can you take it home, learn it, and work with the kids for two hours at a time to teach them this?'" This woman is not an educator. She's a lovely woman. She's incredibly bright. But why is it a parent volunteer's job to teach this new text in this new way? And I don't think that's laziness on the teacher's part. I think that she's overworked. She doesn't have adequate support staff, and there's another new thing being thrown her way. So to be perfectly frank, I just, I hate teaching to the test, and I think we need to go back to teaching so people think, so that they can reason and understand what's an accurate source of information or inaccurate source of information, be at the forefront of new ideas and not the same old, same old, "I just want to snap that little pencil every time I see my son coloring." What is that doing? And I know there's research that shows that art affects things, but the research also shows that the way in which coloring is used, or at least in his situation, that it's not beneficial at all.
Makes you wonder if, you know, the teacher is, in that particular case, maybe feeling overworked, overwhelmed, and then just needed something to create busy time, you know? You know, that's true. That's a shame. I don't know if it's true. But you know, it's interesting, you say, "Teach children how to think."
Yeah.
You know, sometimes we, you notice that in the schools, they're being taught the facts.
Yeah.
But are they taught the ability to critically reason?
Yes.
Are they taught how to challenge the facts? You know, because if you can, if you can challenge what you're being taught, then you learn and understand at a deeper level.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
And that's the critical reasoning part.
Yeah. Having grown up K through 12 at Poway Unified, my teachers repeatedly told me to question things. And I had lovely debates with many teachers, teachers I'm still friends with to this day. And I wasn't being taught to the test and I was constantly challenged. And so it's kind of funny to me that people in the community don't appreciate that I speak my truth. I speak the truth as far as I understand it, when I keep thinking, I'm a product of this district. They told me to go out and challenge things. They told me to question things. They told me to be a critical thinker. They helped mold me. And that's exactly what I'm doing. So when I see wrongdoing at the district level, or I see things that just don't make sense, or I think something is, that just doesn't smell right, I'm going to investigate that. And thank God, my teachers were part of teaching me how to do that and encouraging me to do that.
Yeah, this is great because, yeah, you're right. There, there are some people that rightfully will say, you know, question authority, challenge the system, think for yourself. And if you're getting that instilled from teachers, that's wonderful. But then sometimes when you actually do it.
Oh, yes.
Then the, the, the establishment, the status quo is taken aback by it. Like, who do you think you are? So let's go down this path a little bit. So I, I mean, your history, you know, fighting against the corruption that you've seen at Poway Unified. Take me, how did you get involved in that and what led you to this position that you decided to run?
So it's a long story.
I'm sure it is.
But it's so thrilling. So my husband, when he was getting out of the Marine Corps, he decided to go into education. And he called up his friend, our former principal, John Collins, and he said, I'm getting my master's degree in education.
His friend?
Yes, I'll get into that.
Okay, good.
So, oh, it's juicy. Get ready. So he called up his friend, John Collins, and he said, I'd really love to do my teaching at the school district I grew up in.
Yeah.
And John made some phone calls and he helped Chris get in. And so Chris was doing his student teaching and that sort of work at Poway Unified. Now, we had a very good relationship with John Collins, Chris in particular, my husband Chris. John Collins and my husband would end phone calls with, I love you.
Really?
They were so close.
Really? I had no idea.
So when my husband started noticing some issues going on at school, he thought he could confide in his friend, John Collins, the superintendent. He was under the assumption that their priorities were in line, their values were in line. And they would meet and have coffee and.
So what timeframe is this? What years are we talking?
2013.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, this has been going on. So they would meet and have great discussions. I remember Chris would come back saying, I like him. He really hears me and I think we can make change.
Wow. Okay, this is, this is good.
So then, this part is a little gray for me. I can't quite remember the, the timing here. Maybe June of 2013, there was a young man who was facing an expulsion hearing. He had been called the N-word and.
What school was this?
This was at Del Norte.
Okay.
And my husband was an impact teacher at the time. And my husband is passionate about everything he does. So he was an impact teacher, but he would.
What does that mean?
Impact teacher helps the students who are struggling.
Oh, okay. All right.
And oftentimes it's a job for people getting into education. So they will put the most at risk students with the newest teachers. I don't know that that's the best way, but that's oftentimes how it happens.
Okay.
My husband would come in on Saturdays and say, come on in, we're going to have pizza. He would bring in food. He would leave our weekend vacation sometimes to head down to San Diego to be there for the kids on Saturdays. He was so involved. He would go to, one student had trouble getting to school. He would go to the house and say, I'm standing out front. You've got to get yourself to school. And that kid, that kid would make it to school. So he was really involved. He really cared deeply. One of his students was called the N-word. He slapped the other student for calling him that. Now, that's wrong. There's no question about it. The two students had made up after the fact and worked it out. But this young man who slapped the other student was being punished. The student who called the young man the N-word, no punishment. The young man who slapped him was facing an expulsion hearing and the parent said, Mr. Garnier, will you please come in and testify on his behalf? So my husband went to the district office and he tried to testify. He went in, when he went into the front, they said, okay, you can go to the back. He was sitting there. And a man came out and he asked him who he was. He asked Chris who he was and he said, stand up. And my husband, being a Marine, he stood up. He felt a little bit threatened. And he was very aggressive and he said, are you with the family? And he said, well, I'm a teacher. And he said, you have to wait outside. And it was just very hostile. And my husband said, have I done something? You know, I'm not really sure. Well, anyways, it came down to, they said, you cannot testify on the student's behalf. You are not on the list. So my husband said, okay. He left. The family called and said, please come in. We really need you to testify. You are on the list. He went back again and he, again, he was pulled aside by another man and said, you're not on the list. You cannot testify. Please just write a statement. And my husband said, okay, you know. Anyway, so he left again. He got called again and said, we see your name on the list. You can come in, et cetera, et cetera. He comes in, he's allowed into the back to testify. And the gentleman who had been hostile towards him in the beginning said, sit down, Chris. And my husband said, I've been addressing you as Mr. So-and-so all day. I've addressed everyone as Mr. Or Mrs. My student knows me as Mr. Garnier. I would appreciate if you could address me as Mr. Garnier. And he said, you're pushing it, boy.
Really?
Now, you don't say that to a grown black man. You never call a grown black man a boy.
No, no, no.
And my husband does not let roll, let things roll off his back. And he said, that is unacceptable and I will not be addressed this way.
Yeah.
He left. Fast forward, when we have legal documents and we see that he was always on the list the entire time, why were they preventing him from being able to testify? We also found out that you don't have to be on the list as long as you're being asked to testify by the family, you can still testify.
So was it, who was, who was blocking him? Who was keeping him? What, was it this aggressive individual? And who, who, who was this aggressive?
Paul Gentle.
What was his role?
He was in charge of discipline. He is no longer with the district. He was the principal at Rancho Bernardo High School during the panty scandal. I'm sure you remember that incident.
I'm not sure if I do.
Okay, so before a dance, I believe this was in the late 90s. Before a dance at Rancho Bernardo High School, they wanted to make sure that the girls were dressed appropriately. So they checked their underwear. They checked down their shirts. And.
I don't know how I didn't hear about this. Oh, my gosh. Really?
Yes. So he was in charge of the school during that time.
Oh, my God.
And so my husband talked to John. He said, I've never been talked to like that. That was atrocious. And so he filed a complaint.
Yeah.
Once the complaint was filed, John cut off a lot of communication. Once my husband took it more public when he wasn't getting anywhere, John then said, okay, let's talk.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's when the setup began and.
The setup? Okay.
So we filed a complaint and we thought, well, we can work this out with John. And you know John Collins. He can be as personable as anything when he wants to be. Up until we knew that he was against us, we thought, he's going to help us. We just want to work this out. So we never had any intention of litigation with the district. My husband just filled out the paperwork for the complaint. Then we realized they were telling a lot of lies. They, the district, the man who said, just write the complaint, not the aggressive one, the other one, who's still at the district office. He said that Principal La Master had made a claim about Chris. We found out that that was not true. And I think that Principal La Master has a lot of integrity. I'll leave it at that. So we thought, okay, so we're going to work this out. We filed the complaint and we're thinking everything's going to be fine. We had the right to sue from the Department of Fair Housing and Employment. I, I can't remember the exact title, but, and within, within that complaint, we had a year to sue. We had heard that we needed counsel, so we hired counsel, thinking this is never going to come to fruition. We, we could, we can work this out. And Chris the entire time said, just let me help be a part of educating some people at Poway Unified. Why that's not appropriate. Let me have a sit down. Let's sit down and talk about this. So the entire time, John is playing us and he invited Chris to meet with the superintendent of Oceanside, Dr. Chris Hurst. He's a black man, a former Marine, and I believe he went to USC as well. So he and Chris, my husband being a former Marine, being at USC, being in education, being a black man, he thought this might be a good mentor for him. So Chris went to Oceanside to meet with Dr. Hurst and Dr. Collins. There was another gentleman in the room that day and he never identified himself. And we have this in a legal statement from Dr. Hurst. He's corroborated what I'm about to tell you. This other man in the room never identified himself and my husband Chris just thought, oh, he's somebody at Oceanside. I don't recognize him. He kind of blended into the background. He would make a little bit of small talk, but not much.
Yeah.
Dr. Collins really fished that day and he's a smooth man and he had Chris really open up. And Chris was saying how the military affected him so much and it was so hard to be away from his child. They were fishing for information on Chris. And my husband said, you know, the difficulties of coming back from war, yes, I do have PTSD and there are some sensitive issues. And he had never talked with anyone about these things other than family, but he felt so comfortable with Dr. Collins and speaking to another Marine and that sort of thing.
Yeah.
And again, he had counsel at the time. My husband Chris had counsel at the time. A couple of days later, there's a restraining order against Chris and the story sold that he has PTSD and he wants to shoot everyone up. That man in the room was Dan Shinoff. He was an attorney working for the school district and he never identified himself. And he's never been held accountable for that unethical behavior.
That name always pops up, you know, Shinoff.
And I'd love to get into that about how he's affected school districts throughout San Diego and the JPA and the San Diego County Office of Education. So now, and we find out later through Public Request Act, that the gentleman who was named in the lawsuit, we haven't started the lawsuit. We waited until the absolute last day because we didn't want to file a lawsuit. But we had the right to sue. The man named in that was sending emails to the new principal at our children's school saying, keep them away.
So this is like defamation of character, right?
We got railroaded.
Yeah.
And we were so naive at the time. So this woman who, I've worked, it's taken me years to work through this. She was in a difficult position. She had her superiors telling her, keep him away. So my husband.
This is a painted rock.
This is a painted rock.
Okay. Now I remember this when, when Chris was prevented from being on campus.
That's right. So she was a new principal there and Chris had been highly involved in the school, more so than me. I was busy having a baby. And when, I actually brought it up to him first. I had said hello to her several times and she would look at me and look away. And I said, it's something funny with the new principal. And he said, it's weird because she seems a little cold. And we thought, okay. And we tried to give her the benefit of the doubt. You know, she's new here. She's finding her way.
Yeah.
Things got more and more interesting and we said, can we sit down and meet with you? It feels like something's off here. She would never meet with us. She would never talk with us. Chris ran and won the student senate council at the school. They overturned that election. We find out later that Collins said he can't win. Well, you can't involve yourself in an election.
No, I remember this story. Yeah.
So we find out later through documentation that the district office, the man involved in being named in that lawsuit was saying, get rid of the Garniers. Keep them away. Do what it takes. So this woman was a pawn in their scheme and she has since paid the price. She Facebook friend requested Chris and me at one point and I don't know what she intended. We, we stayed away from it because we don't know what's a setup and what's not, but we've run into her in the community several times and we've had pleasant exchanges. My anger was directed at her for a long time and I've since realized she was a pawn. And she got demoted afterwards and her reputation has, you know, so my hope is one day that there can be healing across the board there. But a side note as well, the Board of Education, when everything was going against Collins, they actually sued Collins for the legal action he took against us, the restraining order and that sort of thing. Yet they, they want to go after him for that, but they won't ever try to make things right. We never threatened anyone. We never assaulted anyone. The rumors are exciting. I, I hear things every once in a while. I think, well, that, that's something. I wouldn't like me either if I believed that. But so we have a meeting with John Collins and he hugged Chris that day. He hugged me. He said, oh, I can't wait for this to all be over. I love you guys so much. Chris, I want you here teaching. He had already gone after the restraining order for him. And Chris was kept away from our kids' campus for a year. I think they were trying to get rid of us. The people who testified were the principal and the people being named in the lawsuit. So they had every reason to defame Chris and make things up, which they did. We were shocked. We hired just a regular old attorney because we thought, well, the truth is on our side. We never threatened anyone.
Yeah, yeah.
It didn't work. We also found out that Dan Shinoff hosts a lot of fundraisers for judges.
Oh, no.
He's very well connected.
Okay.
So the restraining order comes, it's a three-year restraining order. And that was a low point. That was a really tough.
Three-year restraining?
A three-year restraining order.
To keep him off a painted rock campus?
Yes. And it was just, Shinoff tried to actually get a restraining order for everyone at Poway Unified. Obviously he was unsuccessful. That's ridiculous. We would have to move.
So this means you're, you're, you can't go to like your recital, like the Christmas recital or, you know, the, the, you know, the graduation day, the, you know, they usually have a dad event, you know? He's prevented from going on all that.
That's right. It was, it was tough. So my husband and I, we have a yours, mine and ours situation. He has custody of his son from his first marriage. I have custody of my daughter from my first marriage. And then we have our little one together. So the one, the child that's affected the most was our oldest, my husband's son and my stepson.
Yeah.
He, his mother lives a distance away and Chris was always like a room dad and involved. And all of a sudden, stepmom had to come in and be the number one parent. I was there for lunch with dad. We would do FaceTime for plays and recitals and things like that. And he was completely excluded.
Oh, my gosh.
So as painful as it was for Chris, it was extremely painful for our children as well. My daughter would hide under the desk when the principal would walk in. She was in second grade at the time.
Oh, no.
And I said, let's get our kids out of here. What are we doing? And he said, we didn't do anything wrong and the truth will come. And he was so strong, like he couldn't drive the kids to school. He couldn't pick them up. I remember one time I was so sick and I was just dragging myself in the car and got the kids to school, but.
This is the Marine in him, right?
This is the Marine in him. We didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah.
We're staying the course.
He's all about integrity, character, strong-willed.
That's right. Honor, courage, commitment. So we didn't go anywhere. The new school year started. The principal was there for a month and they moved her. And we did not make things easy. We said, we still have our rights. We have the right to parent teacher conferences, everything. So they had to start having teachers come off campus to meet with us and things like that.
Oh, my, oh, oh, my goodness.
But there's, there was a meeting we had with Collins and Tracy Hogarth, the former associate superintendent and Dan Shinoff and our attorneys. And they said, how do we basically make your lawsuit go away? Which we hadn't yet filed, but they anticipated that we would, I suppose. And they, so my feeling is that they started the restraining order to say, we'll pull this if you pull your lawsuit. In fact, they even allowed Chris to go back to school for a couple of weeks until the judge found out and said, you can't do that. This is a restraining order. So he was walking right past the principal who they said was in dire danger. And so then the judge found out and said, you can't do that. And so they rescinded that and went back to the restraining order and Chris said, he'll be embarrassed if I say this, but he was just a cowboy that day. It was so beautiful. He looked at John Collins and John Collins said, how are you doing? He said, I'm disappointed in you. And he said, when Dan Shinoff was trying the stuff about, you know, we can make all this go away. My husband looked at Tracy Hogarth and John Collins and he said, if you get rid of this now, I'll consider letting you keep your jobs. And I think they laughed at him. Who's laughing now?
Right, right, right.
So the restraining order, three years. And, and throughout that time, when we realized the character of John Collins for doing this, we started digging because we thought that this isn't right, that why would this take place this way? And the more we dug, the more we found out, the more we found out, the more we shared it and, and here we are. So.
Wow. Well, I mean, there's. Wow. Well, I mean, there's, and then this whole painted rock restraining order, was it, was that also in 2013?
That took place in October of 2014.
Yeah.
And the trial, I think, started in January of 2015. So the restraining order was in place until about May of 2018. And we would see her sometimes around and legally she could have called the police and said, leave. But we just stuck to our own. She was never afraid and we never threatened anyone. And again, when I hear the rumors, in fact, I was probably more volatile than he was. And they, they did such a good job of using who Chris is against him. Because he was in the military, well, you would think you could praise somebody for that. Nope. He's violent. They, Dan Shinoff and John Collins went to our children's school to talk to the parents and some of the parents expressed to me what was said there and it's pretty disturbing. And he's a loud black man. He's loud because he's deaf from flying helicopters for our country, Iraq and Afghanistan. He's a black man. He just is. There's, and you know what? That's okay. And and he, they sold such a great picture. A lady, I just found out the other day, she was expressing to somebody how awful we are. And she said, my husband made me carry pepper spray around because of that man. And I thought, why don't you just talk to us? Why don't you just talk to us? Did you ever need the pepper spray? No, you didn't. In fact, you're safer with Chris at school than when he's not at school. John Collins then brought in plain clothed armed guards for tens of thousands of dollars to our kids' school. Again, that creates fear in people.
Yeah.
And the only way to save himself, I'm referring to John Collins, was to make what we were saying invalid. Now, it was a lot harder for them to say, watch out for Kim Garnier. She's crazy woman. She's going to come in here and kill everyone. But the loud black man who's outspoken and doesn't back down, people bought it. Some people did. Some people were great. Like Gabby Dow, she said, can you come over to my house? I want to talk to you. And I'll, we will forever be indebted to the Dow family because they treated us like humans. And you did as well, John Riley. I have to tell you, there's certain people we will never forget in this process. And but some people believe it. Some people who were friends, we were friends through the school, backed away. There's a lady who was always nice to us. Our sons are friends. And she said, people stopped talking to her because she continued to talk to us. And since, you know, more of the truth has come out, people have warmed to us and some have apologized and, but there's still a faction of people who are holding on so tightly to some of this. And I think, why don't you just ask, you know, I, I have no problem. You know, somebody said, oh, you guys, you know, this rumor, that rumor. And there's usually a pretty easy way to clear that stuff up. Just ask us. We can help you. We can show you documentation. We can, you know, so it got really ugly for a while and I want people to understand that we were fighting for our family. So it wasn't, it was such a personal fight that we had to fight as hard as we did. The option was fight. We, we discussed it. Do we leave or do we fight? And really, there was never a question. He said, we're going to fight because we're, this is a lie. And when, again, when we found out more, we're both K through 12 graduates. My husband played football for Rancho Grande High School. He was ASB president of his elementary, middle and high school.
Wow. I didn't know that.
And university president of University of Hawaii.
Yeah, nice.
But we have such a pride in this school district. And when we saw the way John Collins was mismanaging it and mistreating people, and we're not the only people that he came after. We just fought back really hard. We knew we had to do something. So.
Well, it seems like there's been a long history of Collins and the Collins regime of using their power and their leverage to shut certain people down. But it seems like they picked a fight with the wrong family because not only is Chris a Marine and a, and a strong willed man, a strong character, he wasn't going to back down. And then you were taught by your teachers to never back down and question authority and all of that, which we already covered. And, and you didn't give up. You stood tall. I think that should be applauded.
Thank you. It wasn't easy.
No, gosh. Well, I mean, I, you know, I didn't really know you that well then. And you, you hear all this stuff and, you know, I'd sometimes run into you at a board meeting and, but, you know, I, I sensed that the, the public opinion tide greatly changed once Collins was found out to be a corrupt superintendent and it became public knowledge. And then suddenly everyone was like, oh, the Garniers, they're actually right. They're not just a bunch of complainers, that they're actually, they have identified the problem, the root of the problem. And maybe without the Garniers fighting as hard as they did, we never would have uncovered the, the, the theft of, what was it, $350,000 that Collins stole?
And that was just to 2012. Before that, he was in charge of finance and they didn't investigate that.
Right. So it could have been a lot more. So wow, you guys have been through a lot.
Yeah. But we've come out so much stronger on the other side. And now we're using our position to help as many people as we can. And we had a, a teacher come to us. It's funny because as much as the union is against my message, the teachers will whisper to me all the time, thank you. And, you know, I appreciate what you're doing. But a teacher came to us, our name is out there and she was being sexually harassed by a superior.
Oh, no.
And it was bad. It was really terrible. And people come to us a lot and we always verify these stories. We never just take somebody at their word. So we did our investigative work and he was bad. And she said, I don't trust my union rep. And I found out who it was and I said, that's accurate. Turns out the union rep was going behind her back and he was going to get rid of her, the problem, and just spread the rumor that she was of that persuasion to say these things or conduct herself in a certain way. She came to us and again, the superintendent was instrumental in helping this teacher. And if I can touch on a point about Poway Unified being reactive instead of proactive. So after this incident and things were dealt with, my husband, Chris, went to speak to the superintendent, trustee Zane and trustee Beatty. He called a meeting and he said, why don't we do like the military, no fraternization clause? It protects everyone.
No fraterniz, I mean, like no.
So a superior can enter into a relationship with a subordinate without there being disclosure and protective measures. Because then it's not he said, she said. It can't be, well, it was consensual. Well, no, I was, you know. And trustee Zane said he was on board with it. Trustee Beatty said she was on board with it. And it got nowhere. And I know trustee Beatty is still on board with it. We can't get the board majority to go along with it. But that protects people because that teacher was about ready to start a lawsuit. She had a great case. She had talked with attorneys and we said, let's just see what we can do. Let's put the brakes on a second. Let's see what we can do. And it didn't need to go to litigation. And the gentleman was thinking that because he was going to no longer be in a position he was, that he may get a position at the district office. The idea, the old Poway, if you will, is you mess up, you move up. And that's one of the reasons we have such, we had such weakness and there's still some residual at the district office because you would mess up. They'd take you away from the kids and they would put you in a position of power. So.
That's what Gabby Dow said. She said that the, like the director of IT was just a promoted principal.
Yeah.
He wasn't a technology professional.
Yeah. Yeah. He, he has a terrible reputation and he made, he played politics. He made friends with Collins. He was a good old boy. He was intimate with his teachers. He was married. He got promoted to a position that he was not qualified for. And he has since left the district. That's one of the things, one of the things I'm really proud of. We really wrecked shop when we found out something he was doing wrong. It spread out from John Collins to anyone who we found out was doing something wrong. Because when we went through these Public Request Act and we would get these documentations from the school district, the school district is a public entity. The taxpayers are entitled to information. We would see some of these things that they were doing and we started calling people out left and right. We were pointing fingers like we were an octopus and just, and a lot of these people who were taking money inappropriately from the district or taking money they should not have been taking, they're gone. And a lot of the good ones are still there. There was a, a woman in the finance department who was reporting to Magala Tholandi, Associate Superintendent of Finance. And she was pointing out what John Collins was doing. I found this out in the trial through Detective Gianni, or excuse me, District Attorney Gianni. She was blowing the whistle on it and it got buried, of course. But a man who takes $17,000 out of petty cash when the limit is 150, someone's going to notice that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. So some people did notice it. They called attention to it. That woman is still at the district. So thank goodness for her.
This is interesting because in so many cases, people are coming to you because they feel that their rights are being violated. You know, whether it's a special needs student, whether it's, you know, a, a child that, you know, got into an altercation, a racist charge altercation, whether it's a teacher that was being sexually harassed, you know, it's interesting for you to be in a, potentially to be in a leadership position on the board. I think if there's any question, people would understand that you're the person that's going to protect the little guy.
Yeah. Somebody described me once as fiercely protective and kind of a light bulb, but not, and I, you know, sometimes you go through life, what is my talent? What am I good at? What should I do?
Yeah, yeah.
And I went, yeah, that's me. I'm fiercely protective. I'm a mama bear. And if somebody did you wrong, I don't care if I just met you two minutes ago, or if, you know, I was the kid growing up. If I ever saw somebody eating lunch alone, it hurt me, like it physically hurt me. And I would say, hey, come sit with us. And, and I realize I've taken that into adulthood. And when somebody's doing somebody wrong, especially this latest case, a military family, a special needs child, and the district doesn't want to negotiate anything. They don't want to settle anything. I'll help you out. You know, so anyone who has an issue with the district, come to us. Come to my husband and myself. If I don't get elected, I still have my voice and I still have my protective nature. My husband has his educational policy background and, and we'll get the job done, whatever it needs to be. We'll protect you.
Wow. That's extraordinary. I mean, everything you guys have been through, you know, and your principles have shined through during that process. So bravo. Let's, let's change things up a little. Tell me about your trip to Hong Kong. I mean, you touched on the, the, the trip, you know, to the school and the things you learned, but you were there for your husband, right? So tell me that whole story. And I know you brought your family with you.
So again, interestingly, so many good things have come from this pain, if you will. My husband decided that he would like to go further in education, seeing what he has seen in public education. He wants to be a change maker in a positive way. So he actually ended up deciding to go get his doctoral degree at USC in global education. What that means is he is studying policy and studying what makes educational systems throughout the world successful. And I actually am getting an education through him. I keep saying, what degree do I get? I've edited all your papers. Do I get a little doctorate degree? So, so it's really fascinating to see his progress in this and how much he's learned. And then vicariously, I'm learning as well.
Yeah.
And this time, so he's traveled many places, but this time he went to Hong Kong. It's his second trip to Hong Kong. And we thought, what better education is there for the kids than a trip to Hong Kong? Let's travel the world. So, so we, he went just over a week before we did. And I took the three kids out, ages 12, 11, and our little guy turned five in Hong Kong. And they got to see this whole new world and it was fantastic from the food they ate to the culture they saw, transportation, everything. And I think their minds were really open to the fact that America is such an amazing country, but we can also learn what works well in other countries. So the next stop for my husband is Doha in the Middle East.
Okay.
And then after that, he'll travel to Finland, which has the number one education system in the world. And one of the things that we find is that America spends quite a bit per student on education, but our rate of return is subpar.
Yeah, that's true.
So it's not simply that we need more money for education. And that's a really important point to make. It's the value system we have and how do we implement the money that we do have. So other countries who are exceeding us in many ways, they're not spending as much per child. And so that knowledge of, it's not simply the money that affects their success rate. It's how do we spend the money and what are our priorities and how innovative can we be?
Yeah. Innovation's huge, right? We talked about that. And, and you even touched on the, the whole notion of the challenge in, you know, American schools and California particularly is the issue of diversity. Because a, a great deal of focus is spent on like ESL students, right? English is a second language. And there's a lot of people here from a lot of different cultures that it's not like you're teaching a homogenous group of people that are all Chinese or all Japanese, right? And so it puts a lot of, it creates a lot of other issues that the school district has to deal with.
Yes.
Wow.
But I think that that is probably our greatest strength.
Of course.
It's a challenge, but it's also our greatest strength. And we have one school in Poway Unified that's a dual language immersion.
There's two of them, right?
Oh, Valley and then.
It's one of the schools in Penasquidos that does the Mandarin.
The Mandarin. That's new. Yes, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Can't remember which school it is. Is it Dobie Bluffs? I'm not sure.
And we can, that should be exploding here.
Completely.
I mean, and again, if we're utilizing parent volunteers to teach language arts in a elementary school classroom, if that's what we're going to do, then bring in the, the parents and have them teach language then, if that's the case. But we can do so much more. And our, our diversity in America is such a strength. When we can be exposed to all this from kindergarten on and we see people who look different than us, sound different than us, eat differently than us, and we understand what a gift that is, we can take that out into the world and we can relate to so many people throughout the world. And so to see it simply as a challenge, which it is a challenge to figure out how best to utilize it. But if we see it just as a challenge, it's not a stumbling block. It's a stepping stone. And we can, we can embrace this in San Diego and Poway and just be the, the forefront of what it means to have success in a diversified culture.
Yeah. You're absolutely right. And I think it, it, it could be a very unique feature that make the distinguishes Poway Unified because it's, it's not necessarily, you know, we've got to teach different kids of different backgrounds. But if we can teach people, regardless of who they are, how to interact and relate with people of different backgrounds, that's going to make them better business people.
That's right.
That's going to make them better scientists.
That's right.
That's going to make them better educators. Because the world is global.
That's right.
You know?
That's right.
And then especially in California, it's just a melting pot of, of so many different ethnicities and languages and everyone's from somewhere else.
Yeah. Somebody told me something one time and I actually really embraced it. We're not so much a melting pot as we are a jambalaya. So we don't all get reduced down to the same thing, but we get to enjoy a chunk of this and a chunk of that. I like that. Yeah, a jambalaya. And so we can learn so much just by opening our eyes and embracing what's around us.
Yeah. That's a great, that's a good analogy. Let's again, change things up. So what do you do when you're not doing what we just talked about?
Well, it's kind of interesting because I just stepped away from my full-time job. But really what my husband and I do is we eat, sleep and breathe public education and advocacy for empowering parents and even empowering teachers. But prior to this, I was working as a logistics manager for my father's company. He had a cat litter company that was sold through Costco throughout the world. We were in.
I'm sorry, what company?
Cat litter.
What's, oh, cat litter.
Yeah, a lot of people think I'm saying catheter company.
Well, I thought you said caterpillar. And I was like.
That's exciting too.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
So cat litter. And we were sold in Canada and Taiwan and we're just all over.
Yeah.
And that was wonderful, but I knew that wasn't my passion. That allowed me to be there for my kids a great deal. And I'm really grateful for that. But now it's time for a new phase and after the election, I'll be returning to school. And, but really, I mean, we have trouble going out to dinner with people that don't talk education because we're just so obsessed with it. When we wake up in the morning, we're talking about which family we're helping that day, what's on the schedule, when we're going to bed at night, we're debriefing on, you know, what happened or, you know, legal issues or anything like that. This is just what we do. This is who we've become from this situation prior to. Prior to this, Chris was going to be a teacher and, um, I was working at a cat litter company. So, um, it's, it's changed the trajectory of our lives immensely.
So maybe there is something, maybe it is okay to say you love John Collins, because without him.
Love that man.
Without him, you wouldn't have gone on this trajectory, right?
That's right. Exactly.
Wow. Yeah. And then, you know, and then, you know, your husband's pursuing his PhD, right?
That's right. EDD, but it's a doctoral degree.
A doctoral degree. Wow. That's awesome.
And after this, he, um, will be going to Harvard for his master's in business. So.
An MBA?
Yeah.
Wow, Harvard MBA.
Once we saw how America just does not, uh, value education, I mean, you see that in the way teachers are paid in general.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I guess it's an itch that we need to scratch. We need to fix this. And he intends to, um, you know, be the secretary of education one day. He has a strong background with military. Um, this will be his third master's degree, a doctoral degree. Um, and we want to, if you thought we've bought John Collins' heart, just wait to see what happens in American education.
Oh no. Betsy DeVos, we were looking over her shoulder.
See ya.
Wow, that's interesting. Uh, yeah, you live, eat, sleep, education.
Yeah, we really do.
Yeah, that's unbelievable. I mean, I knew you, I knew you did a lot of that. I didn't know to the extent and the depth of it. And then, you know, and then he's pursuing his degree and everything, you know? But, you know, I think the MBA could be very helpful for him because you'd be able to apply sort of business principles to the way the school district is run, because you see a lot of the people in leadership and, uh, in, in school board, or not school board, but school administrations are often, you know, they're educators.
Yes.
At heart.
Yes.
Okay. And, and they become, they're really good at the curriculum, you know, to a large degree. But the business side of running a district is where they often fail.
That's right. Yeah.
And that was Collins, right?
Yes. Yeah. Well, he knew enough how to work the system. That's for darn sure. But it also comes into play of who he put around him. He put people around him who would allow it. Uh, yeah, but again, that's just, it's so funny because before, like I said, we could have normal conversations. And now it's all just strictly that. And, um, we love it though. We love it. Because when you can affect, um, the scholarly identity of a young person and they see themselves as somebody who can achieve, and we're putting those people out into the world.
Yeah.
Our future's very, very bright.
No doubt. Yeah. Right on. So I know you went to RB High.
Yes.
Okay. So where did you go to middle school and elementary school?
I went to Meadowbrook for middle school and then for elementary school, I started at Sunset Hills. And then when Canyon View opened, um, Jack Troxel was the principal there. When that school opened, I went there for third grade, uh, three, four and five. Um, so I was there when the school was brand new and, um, I can name all my teachers. I just loved my school experience. They were all fantastic. Um, I'm friends with Tim Blakeney from Meadowbrook still. He was my seventh grade teacher. One of my favorite teachers was Mr. Bass at, um, Meadowbrook. And, uh, I'm Facebook friends with a lot of my teachers and it's funny, my fifth grade teacher, she just retired last year, but she was at Paints Rock. And, you know, that's, that's one of the best things about this community is these, there's such a, um, sense of community.
Yeah.
And I love that. So.
Yeah. I mean, we've gotten to know a lot of the teachers as well and you get to know them socially. And a lot of times they also are your, you know, your kid's softball coach, or you know? And, um, and then you also hear them, you know, from a teacher's perspective, that sometimes they'll gripe a little bit about. And I remember, I'm not going to say the gentleman's name, but he's a teacher and he was always upset that, that there was so much technology being rolled into the district headquarters, all these new computers and everything. And he was dealing with like this ancient system that barely worked and that always bugged him, I remember. Um, but wow. Um, amazing, the things that you guys have been through. And so now you decided to run. I mean, what was the, what pushed you over the edge to say, I'm going to run for school board?
I think it had been simmering for a long time. Um, and we, so much of our time is taking help, taking up helping one person and one family and one teacher and everything. And I thought, I'm so sick and tired of hearing the same things that result in the same problems. And, uh, you know, I'm just barely keeping my head above water, helping this person, this person, this person. Let me, you know, step up and try to help the masses in our community and really confront these people who I see all the time, say, it's for the children. And their decisions behind closed doors are absolutely not for the children. So anger. There you go.
Good. Good. I mean, well, yeah, bravo to you for deciding to step up, you know? And to your point, yeah, you've been helping so many people individually. Why not get on the board, help implement policy that can help, how many thousand, 30,000 students we have, 36,000? That's, that's awesome.
Thank you.
That really is.
And like I said, if I'm not elected, I'll help this person and this person and this person and this person. That's not going to end. So, um, but I'd really like to be put in that position, not for a title or anything like that. I do not care about that. I want to be put there so that people know that their advocate is in a position of power to make change for them. I think that the people who don't like my family, they don't like my family and there's not much I can do about that. But the people who, um, know what we're really all about, they know that I'm going to be there for them. I've gotten so many messages saying like, I, um, I am in a, lesbian marriage and our kids face this. And I have hope that you on the school board will help my family. Or, uh, we're a minority family and this has happened to us and this has happened to us and this has happened to us. And you understand, and if you're on the board, you can help me. Or hey, you know, I've donated to the foundation at my kid's school for years. What's going on with the budget? You can help me. People know, um, because I'm not promises, I'm reputation. My reputation tells you all you need to know. You don't have to hope with me. There's no, hope is not a plan, right? There's no hope there. You know.
Right. Yeah. Well, yeah. I mean, that's what I was saying earlier. I mean, you, you're the, your family stands up for the rights of people.
Yeah.
Um, and will defend them.
Yes.
And that's, that's the mama bear, right? And so, um, yeah, you guys have a strong reputation that way. And I think, yeah, there are some folks that, you know, are not, you know, part of your fan club, but they're mostly the ones that were aligned with the whole John Collins regime, right? You know, whether they were members of the union or administrators or families that supported that group, right?
Yes.
And, uh, John Collins being gone, I mean, it's to, it was such a huge victory for your family.
Well, victory for the community. Um, I can only imagine what would have happened.
I mean, for me, I mean, I'm like, I'm all about like taxpayer, you know, protecting taxpayers. And to see him gone, I feel good as a taxpayer.
And a lot of people were speaking out at the board meetings for years. And that's something also, um, some of our critics have said, well, okay, so you did a good thing, but why'd you have to do it that way? Well, we did it the right way, if you will.
Yeah.
Uh, we sat down and talked to people. We tried to meet with certain, we tried to meet with every board member. Some would not meet with us. We filled out paperwork. We, we did it the right way and we got crickets. And in fact, that just gave them more time to, um, turn us into these terrible people. And so, um, we did it the wrong way, I guess.
No, no, you didn't. No, the, the end result is on target. You guys tried to work through the system. You were getting roadblocks. You exposed the corruption. You shined a light. You know, there was a sunshine's the best disinfectant, right? And, um, and, uh, the truth prevailed.
Yeah.
Just like Chris predicted it would, it painted rock.
He was so strong. Uh, let me tell you, I had stomach aches. Um, my health was not good. I developed this really fancy eye twitch that, you know, it was difficult to talk to people when you're winking on the entire time. Um, I was really stressed out. Oh gosh, it's starting. And, um, he kept saying, it's going to happen because we're not lying. We are, we just have to stay strong and it will come. And so he was not only strong for himself, he was strong for me too.
It takes a lot of guts and, and strength too. I mean, you've got to have stamina.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it's one thing to be strong for a day or a week, but you guys have been strong for years.
Yeah. Stamina is key. And, you know, um, when newspaper articles would come out, you know, some things are true, some things are not true. But the comments at the bottom, I used to read those and I would put the kids to bed and then I would get in front of my computer and start responding to people. Because I thought, if they just know the facts or if they hear what, you know, what's behind this or something, they'll understand. And people wrote vile, vile things, terrible things.
Oh, yeah, they did. I saw some of that.
I was sick and some of them included our children and, um, and Chris said, what are you doing? What does that matter? The truth is the truth, whether people believe it or not. And it was like a light bulb and I went, the people who don't want to see the truth never will.
Right.
And I stepped back from that and that was the best thing I did. And I realized that I'm totally okay being hated if I really truly am doing what I believe to be the righteous thing. So, you know, uh, there's rumors that we hit the PFT president's car, rumors we hit the superintendent's car. Like so many rumors, I can't even tell you. And, um, what am I going to do about it? If people choose to believe those things, that's their choice.
Wow. Yes. It is tempting, you know, to get on and you respond to a comment on an article or on Facebook. Sometimes I get nabbed by that web, you know?
Yes.
Cause you just can't help it.
Yeah.
But then some, then you take a step back and you realize, why am I arguing with this person? I don't know who the heck they are. They don't really matter.
And it gets mean so quick.
Yeah. And it gets ugly. And as long as you feel righteous in what you believe and you know what the truth is, then you can just go forward.
That's right.
And believe in yourself.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing I'm just thinking about as you're sharing everything here, you know? You always said, I wish people just knew the truth, you know? Hopefully people will watch this podcast or listen to this podcast and hear the whole story.
Yeah.
Cause they probably only heard this snippet here or that snippet there. That's all I ever heard. And so you've shared with us from beginning to current, current day.
Well, um, another, you know, uh, piece of the puzzle here is, and we touched on it earlier, Dan Shinoff. So he's an attorney in San Diego and throughout this process, we realized, uh, just how unscrupulous he is as well. And so in our fight, you know, I said, we started going, wait, you're not doing the right thing either. You're not doing the right thing. Well, he was one of the people not doing the right thing. He was, um, he had to settle a malpractice case at San Lucidro for $1.8 million. It's one of the poorest school districts.
Yeah.
Around. And they took advantage of that poor school district. Um, and they had to settle for 1.8 million. At Miracosta College, um, there was a $305 water theft problem. Well, through investigative work and legal work, Dan Shinoff billed Miracosta College $6.8 million. Let me repeat that. A $305 theft problem. And it was actually, they didn't really report the palm trees correctly or something ridiculous resulted in $6.8 million in fees.
Oh my God.
Uh, there was a special needs case where a young lady needed, um, I think $6,100 from the school district in Solana Beach. She won her case. Dan Shinoff appealed it to the Ninth Circuit Judge, I think it was Corinne. He said, what on earth is this case doing before the Ninth Circuit Court? And he said, I assume it's for legal fees. Um, the school district ended up paying, uh, about $500,000. Um, and then there were another $300,000 in legal fees. This was for a $6,000 special education case that that girl, um, won anyways. So he's still at Poway Unified. He was helping, um, John Collins get the golden handshake. He has, he was the one sitting in the meeting that day, not identifying himself as an attorney. He is friends with the Joint Powers Authority, um, JPA, uh, the lady who runs that, Diane Crozier. He is supposed to be on a rotation with cases in schools throughout San Diego. He was getting 90% of the cases. Why is he getting so many of the cases? Why is he racking up so much in legal fees? We went after them as well. Uh, his son, William Shinoff, was part of the data breach. They made Gabby Dow, who reported that, the, um, bad guy in that. I received medical information from a little girl, Poway Unified, the board majority, Zane O'Connor-Radcliffe and Darsh. They refused to get rid of Dan Shinoff. He's still there, still making money off of our taxpayers. And it's astounding to me that this man who has, in my, uh, so we went after him. Um, about a third of his law firm, I think, left. We've created a, um, a large pain in his, um, world. And he's still the one representing cases against my family. Now, if you don't think he has a personal stake in this, hmm. So this man with, if you will, a vendetta against us for exposing so much of what he's done and making it so public, he's now getting paid by the taxpayers to continue litigation against us. So it's a great deal for him. He gets to punish us. He gets paid by it. He has a stake in the game. He's not impartial. And again, he's still at Poway Unified.
Unbelievable. Well, a lot of this is, this is cronyism, right?
Yes.
You know, so it, it's the, the government that is basically most favored status to, in this case, an attorney. And they've done the same thing with the bonds, you know, with the, with the people that are refinancing. They see, keep going to the well with the same people. And they keep making money.
Yes.
And then, you know, Shinoff, I think, if I recall, positions himself as an attorney that specializes in education. So he's, he's working the system.
Oh, he's working it.
You know, and, and, you know, taxpayers are paying the bill. And then meanwhile, everyone is upset that there's not enough money that's being made available for classroom resources. There's not, we're, we're in a budget deficit. Teachers want more money. But Shinoff, what do you say, 16.8 million?
Uh, 6.8 million for the $300 problem.
So there, so that's it. I mean.
And if, going back to the cab, the community was warned that it was wrong. And people who wanted to speak out against it were silenced because there's a bullying technique in this community. You better put up and get along or you're the enemy.
Right.
And I think you know that.
Yeah.
And so we had every warning in the world that it wasn't right. So why did we go ahead with that? The people closest to the bond had the first opportunity to be a private investor. Um, a lady at Poway Unified, she's no longer there. We exposed her as well. She was partying with the DeLinka Group, the advisors who got us into this cab.
Yeah, that's the name.
And, um, I remember even Michelle O'Connor-Radcliffe, a board member, she said, when she got on the board, she was going to severtize with the DeLinka Group. That did not happen until Dr. Tony Apostle, the interim superintendent, got the ball rolling. They're finally no longer with us, but they made twice the amount on their contract and half the time. Why would our school district be making those decisions? People are benefiting. And if I didn't know as much as I know, I would say, okay, you're crazy. This is a conspiracy theory. Now I've seen the paperwork. I've seen the documentation. So the lady at the school district, who was very close with the DeLinka Group, she was partying up in San Francisco with them and all these kinds of things. And, um, all the people in charge have to do is smile, go before the community and say, we're here for the kids. Behind the curtain, it's a different story. And, um, so the, back to Shinoff and the cab though, um, the only person to ever investigate the capital appreciation bond after it was done, was Bob Price with ESI. He's an investigative firm who works closely with Dan Shinoff. Um, his main investigator gets paid from that investigator's wife at the San Diego County Office of Education. And he got paid, they found no wrongdoing with that cab and case closed. You can't have people investigating themselves. We need outside people, unbiased people to find out what happened there, hold people accountable and see if there's something we can do. I keep hearing, there's really nothing we can do about the cab. Let's see. Don't reelect me if, uh, if I can't do something about that cab.
Well, you can certainly hold people accountable if there's something criminal that occurred. But, yeah, you can't refinance that bill, you know, or the bond. You can't refinance it. So I don't know. It's above my pay grade to figure that out. If you can figure it out and go for it, but definitely.
I'll make some calls.
People need to be held accountable. But you know, the other thing that you talk about, you know, is this bullying issue. And it's always this for the kids, right?
Yes.
And I commented on this in the Gabby Dow podcast. It's, it's one of my peeves, you know? Is that when people are saying it's for the children, it's for the children, but that's just the do-gooder cloak in the front.
Yes.
That the moneyed interests are behind that. I mean, a lot, there's so many things in government, like at the state level, federal level that are sold that way.
Yes.
Where there's this, this do-gooder front group.
Yes.
Trying to push these morally, uh, virtuous programs. But it, but really they're just manipulating the system to put money in certain people's pockets. And then if, and they position it where if you are, if you recognize it is for what it is, that if your people are being manipulated and you say, I'm against it, then you are put as a bad guy.
That's right.
That you hate children.
That's right.
You, you hate firefighters and you want houses to burn down.
Yes.
You hate the police and you want crime everywhere. And it's like, this tactic, it drives me nuts. And you hear it all the time, like, you know, when you get into these TV ads, I mean, uh,
Yeah.
You know, but those people know how to play the game.
That's right. Well, yeah. When I first started this and I had to, um, be diplomatic in my approach to the problems, um, after a couple of times. after a couple of times speaking, I just felt, I don't know, another word, gross. I felt something wasn't right and I realized I was, I was being too diplomatic. And I will not be manipulated by, if I'm not guaranteeing the teachers are raised, I'm not saying I'm going to, I'm not saying I'm not going to. If I'm not guaranteeing them are raised somehow, I'm against teachers.
Right.
Sell that someplace else. And you know what? If I don't get elected because I tell the truth.
To starve.
Yeah, exactly. I know. You know what? Get out on the streets. And the, the, my kids' teachers, especially at Painted Rock, I can say I had a more intimate relationship there. The kids being in elementary school and little. Those people are phenomenal.
Oh yeah.
And when I volunteer in the classroom after a couple of hours, I need to go home and take a little nap. Because what they do all day, and they're not just dealing with the children, they're dealing with the crazy parents too. And the new ideas that they have to implement and budget constraints and all of those things. And especially teachers who maybe are single parents and that's their only source of income. I, I'm well aware of the totality of the, the financial concerns of teachers. So you cannot put somebody in a place where if they want to address the concerns of the budget, that they're anti-teacher. I just won't tolerate that. You can say it, but it's not true.
Right, right. Wow. Where do we go from here? So what, what else do you believe is important that you want to share with the viewers or listeners of this podcast that you think they need to know about you and your candidacy?
It goes back to reputation. And if you look to the truth of my actions, not rumors, not the fun stuff that you get to talk about in the school parking lot afterwards. But if you look to my reputation and my family's reputation for how hard we work for this district and we brought our kids back here. It's not because we didn't have a great experience. We brought our three children back here because we love this community. We love this district. I, I just want to go off a little bit. I was a little girl in the gym at Poway High School. And there was only Poway High School and Mark Carmel High School at the time. And I, my dad used to take the stats for Neville Sainer when he coached the Poway High basketball team. And I watched Judd Bushler before he went to U of A.
Your dad coached the Poway High-
No, he took the stats.
He was a stat guy?
Yes.
But with Judd Bushler playing?
Bushler. I have pictures of myself as a little girl standing next to Judd Bushler.
Yeah, cool.
My roots are here and my husband's roots are here. And this is not, this is not for us. Yes, we had to fight for survival here for a time.
Yeah.
But this is because this is our home. And there's some wolves knocking at the door and I don't want to let them in. And I want to take Poway Unified and going back to the wolf analogy, build a, a home of bricks here and build a solid foundation. We've got the cab coming up. We've got a lot of things that put us on shaky ground because we're spending money that we don't have. I really am concerned about the future of our district. So look to my reputation. And if you think there's somebody who can protect you better, that person should be on the board. But don't fall for the tactics and be very concerned when people have certain endorsements or certain campaign donors, that tells you a lot. I told you, John Riley, that if you would run, I would not run. I felt that way about one other person, that's Gabby Dow. You two are people of integrity and you're the only two I would step away from. And you said, no, I'm not going to do it this time. And Gabby said, she doesn't want to do it this time. Okay. So I'm here. And I hope to be somebody that makes you proud and Gabby Dow proud. And I have to answer to you at the end of the four years, I'm not moving anywhere. This is where I'm going to be. And I have to answer to all the people who believe that I am the person who can serve them the best. So, you know, I'm going to look people in the eye if I'm elected at the end of those four years. And I have to say, I did everything I could and everything was for you, not for me. I'm not going to gerrymander any maps. I'm not going to, you know, take any, I'm not going to take campaign donations from people who have real estate interests before the board. I'm here for you and that's it.
Wow. I think that, I can't think of a better way to close on you saying, I'm here for you.
Thank you.
Kim Garnier.
Thank you so much, John.
Candidate, Poway Unified School Board, Area B. And the election is coming up in a little over four weeks.
That's right.
Wow. We're hitting the home stretch.
Yes.
Okay. And you know, people are getting their absentee ballots here any day and people vote early.
Yes.
You know, I mean, and I know that over, over half the people vote absentee.
Yes.
You know, so people are going to be making their decisions probably then, you know, between now and the 15th.
Yes.
Now and the 20th. You know, so go hard, pedal to the metal, right? For these last couple of days or weeks. So I wish you the most success, the best of luck. It's been a pleasure. I enjoy getting to learn more about you and your story and your history. And I'm just wishing you the best.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.